Lead in a way, God, that would would lead in the direction that you're guiding us, God. Help us to be more thankful for what we have and more appreciative for our fellow citizens and and all the blessings that you've given us, God. We pray that you would bless our leaders statewide, countywide, and nationally, God, and we pray that you would bless our military. We ask these things in your name, Christ Jesus, amen.
Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge. Pledge.
To the flag of United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to say again, thank everyone for coming to the June eleventh, two thousand twenty-four Chilton County Commission meeting. If you will, silence your phones, turn them off, airplane mode, whatever, please. So let the record show that we do have a quorum. Commissioner Mills is absent. So I need a motion to approve the agenda.
Make a motion when we approve the agenda.
Second.
Got a motion, Commissioner Bone, second, Commissioner Williams. Any addition or deletions?
Yes, I got one that somebody forgot to add on my list, Collins Chapel grant.
I listed here for the consent agenda, the resolution to opt-in for the opioid litigation pertaining to Kroger. For regular agenda under commission office, consider spotlight in or participation spotlight in Business Alabama. Under Commissioner Hardy, open nominations for IDA. Under Adam Williams, authorized negotiations with developer on purchase of two hundred property and authorized discussion with landowners to purchase property for a possible landfill plus Collins Chapel.
Yes, ma'am, Collins Chapel grant.
All right, and and under commission office or attorney, Facebook page.
Good. Okay. Any discussions? Questions?
Aldama Bridge Builders. I believe that is one.
Yeah, it is.
Approval to enter agreement for one dollar with Aldama Bridge Builders to replace timberdeck on County Road two fifty-one bridge with no labor cost, county to supply materials pending attorney approval. Is that correct?
Okay.
Well, we'll, that's gonna be on the regular agenda, so it'll be addressed again.
Right. Okay, we got a motion and a second. You heard additions and deletions. Any more questions? All in favor of approving the agenda, you don't be saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? So carried. Okay.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, could I say something before we get started?
Yes.
Questions that was asked about our meeting not being on the air last time. It was an audio glitch that nobody knew about until the meeting was over. Wasn't anybody's fault. It was just a power surge that knocked this audio off.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Public comments, Mr. Jeff Carroll? Got about three minutes, Mr. Jeff.
Thank y'all for your time tonight, gentlemen, and y'all know who I am. I've been here twice to the work sessions. But I'm here tonight representing myself and my company and my business and all the good people of Chilton County who make their living in some way or another through dealing with real estate. The, uh, this includes people like myself who buy and sell land, who operate equipment, who develop land, who, uh, real estate agents who list property for sale, people in the septic tank business, sir, uh, all these different types of people. People that survey land, mortgage companies, banks, lawyers who deal with real estate closings, home builders, mobile home movers, lumberyards, hardware stores, the list could go on and on. And what y'all have done by trying to begin to press these rules and regulations on all of the people is practically you're in a position of trying to shut down the whole economy of Chilton County that people are involved in that work. And so I'm here to represent them, not only them, but I'm also here because I have no other option but to file a formal complaint on the Chilton County Commission and the Chilton County Engineer and the Road Department and the Chilton County Water Authority and the Chilton County Water Board. The unfairness of the way you have all began to enforce these rules and regulations that was put in paper, two thousand fifteen, September the fourteenth, the way you set about to enforce your rules and regulations is appalling to me, to say the least. For some nine and a half years, you say these documents I hold in my hand called the subdivision regulation of Chilton County, Alabama, they've been in 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 paper, but only recently have they been enforced. And also, I'm here to represent myself because I feel like I've been unfairly singled out and as well as many other people in the last few weeks and months with these rules and regulations without anybody explaining or telling me when they was coming or when they was gonna start or anything else. But I've been told I'm in violation of these rules and regulations by putting in illegal subdivision on a county road, County Road two thirty-five. But if I'm in violation, then there's a lot of other people, hundreds of them, that are in violation of these same rules and regulations since the year two thousand fifteen. And two sessions ago, Mr. Hardy spoke up and said, everybody has conformed. He said it twice in that work session to these rules and regulations, but I have evidence that he he didn't even conform to it. Two years ago, he sold land. That was not according to these rules and regulations.
That ain't what I said, by the way.
You did say it. You said it twice, Jimmy.
Hold it.
I'm not here to argue. I'm not here to get upset.
No, I'm gonna, I'm gonna speak mine. I can tell you that.
Well, go ahead, but I'm just telling you that you're in violation of the same rule and regulation. Yes, you are.
Sir, I'm not. You need to go back and do your research.
I've done, done my research.
You're gonna get the wrong papers.
But let me, let me just say this. I've come to learn through, uh, public courthouse records that they have not been complied with. I've had many, many people tell me that they've sold property in many places that I've watched people selling property in the last two years that was in violation of these rules and regulations. So I don't understand, that's the first thing I wanna bring, I don't understand, gentlemen, how y'all can begin to enforce rules and regulations on people without any warning, without any fear. A lot of these things, I've been working on for several years now, getting ready to do what I'm doing, and nobody's informed me of these. You can't even get a copy of these. Y'all don't even have a copy. You have to, you have to go online and get on the internet and print them off. That's why y'all keep it so secret. Why ain't the copies that we could hand this out to every person in this building right here? Y'all don't even want people to know it. That's why. You don't want people to know what you've done. And also, let me just say this. The second part of this complaint tonight deals with the racist and discrimination discriminatory ways that you have ordered the Water Authority of Chilton County to conduct this business. In the last few weeks, what I was told by this, those in charge at the Water Authority is that they were carrying out the demands of the Chilton County Commission and the engineer, Heath Sexton. Now, I've come to believe that the main reason the rules and regulations are being put to work or put to force at this time is strictly nothing more than discrimination and racism against the Hispanic community. And the reason I believe that is because three of you gentlemen sitting on that platform right there have spoken to me off record and said, we're trying to stop Mexicans from coming in here. Three of you. And if that's not a racist comment, then I don't know what is. These people that sit here with me tonight are part of the people and families that have bought land from me, and I'm trying to give them a drink of water. Jesus said, give a man a drink of water if he asks for it. I went to the.
How long you gonna let this continue on before we can address this?
Listen, I, when I'm through, you can address me, Jimmy, but I'm gonna speak my piece tonight.
And I'm gonna speak mine, 'cause I'm glad you opened this door.
Hold up, hold up right now. Mr. Carroll, everybody, hold up. As chairman of this commission, it's my job to keep this meeting in order.
I'm not getting out of order. I'm just speaking what's on my heart.
Hold it, hold it a minute. You done spoke, you done spoke five minutes. Your time's up.
There's some things you need to know before I set out.
We, we know, we know these things, but your time is up. We have amended these rules, and as quick as we get a copy of these rules amended, you will get a copy of them. And.
Well, I'll be back the next time, is all I can tell you, because I'm not through.
Okay. Thank you for your concern.
And, uh, y'all, y'all gave me a cease to work order, and I've got a go to work order for Mr. Sexton because this is pictures of places within two mile radius of my house that dangerous places, water standing in the road. He don't have time to do his job taking care of the roads.
Carroll, your time, your time's up.
Because he's too busy trying to stop everybody from doing anything else. You know, when I get killed over on two thirty-two because the water's standing across the road and I hit it in hydro thing.
Mr. Carroll.
I'm just telling y'all what's going on.
Your time's up. Thank you, sir.
I know it is, but I want you to understand, I'm not here to back down. I'm gonna continue to press forward with this.
All right, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Make a motion when we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Got a motion, Commissioner Bone, second, Commissioner Hardy. This consent agenda consists of the minutes of May twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-four, the claims list of June eleventh, two thousand twenty-four, sheriff requesting surplus of two thousand eighteen Chevrolet Tahoe, road department requesting approval of the county to enter lease purchase agreement on the eight dump trucks with either Riverbank, Kansas Equipment Finance, or Trustmark Bank, based on the rate determined by the county administrator and the county engineer and the county attorney. Request approval for the county chairman to sign the lease purchase agreement for the eight dump trucks. That's the end of the consent agenda. Is any discussion? The opioid litigation, right. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of approving the consent agenda? You don't be saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carried. Sheriff.
Yes, sir.
Your turn again.
My turn again. We've already, uh, asked for the special reservation for the surplus of the vehicle. I'll also be asking for two hundred thousand dollars from ARPA funds for an X-ray machine because of overdoses that we've had there at the jail. People smuggling drugs in, stuffed up in them, and that we can't, we can't combat. Normal searches are not gonna catch that. So we've had, had those things, and if that continues and somebody dies, it's not gonna be good.
Mm-hmm.
So we're asking for this machine. It will actually show, uh, anything, weapons, drugs, you know, anything like that. So it will cut that down hopefully to a minimum. We still may not be a hundred percent, but whatever we can do to, to stop that, so we can deter it from getting into jail and people overdosing or whatever the case may be, we're gonna be better off.
All right. Sheriff's ask for this resolution.
I would ask, is it more appropriate to wait and handle this through that ARPA work session that we were discussing? And I'm, I'm, I know you need, but I wanna make sure we got enough money to do what we kinda committed to and this.
That was my question. I thought we was gonna talk about this all during that session of all this, what we talked about in our work session, that of the requests made by the engineer and the sheriff and other.
Sheriff, would you be opposed to us tabling it until we can have a, a what's left of the ARPA money work session?
That's right.
You can come.
Two birds with one stone.
Get your hat in on that and.
That would be perfect.
Let's see how, where we are money-wise.
Yeah, we also need to ask the Road Department for us to table also, do we have this work session? Do y'all want me to announce the work session? Do y'all want me, y'all wanna tell me now the best time for y'all to have the work session?
Just sooner the better for us on that, but yeah, I'd be good with that.
From my understanding, Ben, we do not have to announce a, an informative work session. Is that correct? Or do we?
On, on this one, I think, I, I just can't envision this particular one happening without a good bit of debate about how to.
Okay.
How to present that resolution to distribute the money, so I, I think you're gonna need a, maybe a work session.
What is it, five days?
You can, you could, under your, under your rules, typically get more time. Under the state open bidding law, you can have a special, a special session, work session on one day's notice, even in a non-emergency situation, so you could waive the rules.
Okay, I would, I would prefer the call to work session on a Monday night before the Tuesday of the next meeting. Is that quick enough? At six o'clock.
Or we could do it next Tuesday night on a off Tuesday night.
Okay, either one.
I mean, does anybody have a call for?
What do y'all prefer? Next Tuesday night, six o'clock? Is that plenty of time, Ben? Does that give us enough time? Next Tuesday?
Yes, sir.
Okay, next Tuesday night, six o'clock, be a informative work session on the ARPA funding money for the sheriff's request and the Road Department. Is that good? Mr. Heath, y'all good with that?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Sylvia, will y'all send out a notice to everybody and remind us?
Okay, thank y'all. All right, that brings us down to the commissioners. Commissioner Bone.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Hardy.
Uh, we have one resolution request to, um, open resolution. I'm opening the nomination. Suspend the rules first for the nominations of the IDA.
I'll make a motion when we suspend the rules.
No, you gotta, you make, open nominations, then you nominate, then you suspend the rules, 'cause you're gonna suspend a rules to close the nominations and appoint her. Isn't that correct, Ben? You gotta open the nominations, then you nominate her, then you suspend a rules.
He's correct.
So you, then, then appoint her.
Yeah.
Uh, I, I can get a resolution of the nominations for the IDA.
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Opening nominations for IDA, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? So carried.
Make a nomination also, uh, for.
Jamie Gault.
Jamie Gault. I had it written down, right? Jamie Gault.
I move we suspend a rules.
Is any other nominations?
Suspend a rules.
And close nominations.
And close nominations.
All right, we need a second.
Second.
Got a motion, Commissioner Williams to suspend the rules and open the nomination, second, Commissioner Bone, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So carried. All opposed?
It's gotta be unanimous, right?
No.
No?
Two thirds.
Two thirds.
Oh, everybody voted for it.
Okay. Now, she gets it by acclamation, or we have to vote on her?
Is any other nominations?
I'll make a nomination, I mean, a, a resolution, we appoint Jamie Gault to this IDA board.
Second.
Got a motion, Commissioner Hardy, second, or Commissioner Parnell, any discussion? All in favor of appointing Jamie Gault, is that correct? You don't be saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? So carried. All right, is that all? Mr. Hardy?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Commissioner Hedley? Commissioner Mills not here. Commissioner Parnell?
No, sir.
Commissioner Williams?
Uh, yes. Before I get into these motions, uh... I wanna thank you for your donation. In Phillip's memory, to one of his warriors. Thank you, gentlemen, and all the staff. I move that the commission grant me the authority to enter negotiation with the developer for the two hundred property.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for Commissioner Williams to enter negotiation on the two hundred property, and that's negotiation only. Any discussion?
My, my comment would be that this is the role of the IDA, and you should entertain the IDA representing the county because they're our economic development wing of the county commission, and that was, that is why they're formed and what their funding and calling and appointments are for.
I'll be glad to ask him if he wants them in on, on the negotiation. If he does, I don't have a problem with it. He just asked me to keep this close to the vest. So I'll ask him and see if he does, then I don't have a problem contacting Christine and the IDA, see if they wanna be part of it.
So, okay, that's just the normal process of how that would work.
Okay. Any more discussion? We have a motion and a second. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Joseph opposes.
Joseph opposes. Okay, motion carried.
And I ask the commission for the authority to meet with two landowners, uh, for the purpose of discussing price for property for a possible landfill.
That's a resolution you're.
Yes.
Okay, got a, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Hardy, second. Discussion? Any discussion, guys? This is for him to just to ask prices and get maybe a plan to present to us. All right, all in favor of Commissioner Williams talking to these owners about a landfill and, and maybe presenting us a plan? Let, I'm gonna be saying aye?
Aha.
Aye? All opposed?
Joseph opposes. Solid Waste Board's authority.
Okay. So the motion's carried. Okay, anything else, Commissioner Williams?
Uh, yeah, I've had a bunch of questions about our grant to Collins Chapel. Could we get some kind of clarification on how that works? Because we've got, uh, a couple of the departments have inquired. They needs, they don't have enough room in their haws or their trucks. I couldn't tell them what we, what they needed to do. Do we, do we have any ground rules for them to request?
The office has come up with a application for these people to fill out, just like we would if we was applying for a grant. Collins Chapel did that. Uh, she has a, uh, application maybe with her there tonight, but did, did you ask for that, for us to adopt that resolution?
It skipped me completely.
I forgot it too. So since, since I'm talking, I'll put that under me right now. We have put, or Sylvia McKishus put together an application for people to fill out. It's a full financial statement. What you want the money for, how much the project will cost, why you can't maybe pay some back, or how much you can pay back, assign license engineer to sign it, and then present it to us, and we go over it as a grant, just like, you know, we would, as the commissioner or anybody else be filling out a grant. I'm asking for a resolution tonight for the commission to adopt this application. Is that correct? McKishus, y'all want, anything to that?
Well, the landing packet doesn't have all that with the engineering drawing and all that. It's the details of your project and your, um, residence and furniture for the past five years and things like that.
Okay.
Is this going back to like what we done for Collins Chapel?
Yeah, we required, we required, uh, plans from Collins Chapel.
I, I thought we sort of decided to make it pretty clear that we done this because a tornado floated away. We don't, that we didn't have money to give over.
Yeah, that's what I, you know, I made that specific.
And this don't, this don't mean that everybody applies for one's gonna get it.
Where the funds are available is our matching grants. That's what we.
Well, I, yeah, I thought it, yeah, I thought it was like.
I've had several phone calls, and that's what I've told them, too.
Yeah, I thought it was a repayable grant, really, is what I thought. We were gonna put the money aside and replenish it as they paid it back.
As a matching grant.
All right, does any of you commissioners want to present a resolution that we adopt this application?
I asked, uh, make a resolution, we adopt the application, because it's added by the commission office staff.
We got a motion, Commissioner Hardy, second, Commissioner Hedley, any discussion?
Well, I'd like to have time to look it over before I vote for it. I haven't seen it. Is it in our packet?
Yeah, send your packet. This was in your email.
I missed it. I played a Jimmy Hart.
Yes, yeah, we do that sometimes.
Okay, would you like to?
Jimmy, those stuff, we need to add to, we need to add or take a little something away. Like draw, y'all got drawings and all that in that? No?
This was for, this was made for appropriations for our fiscal budget.
Budget.
This is, yeah.
It helps the board and things like that. It can be used for projects, but this is what this is developed for. Every person that requests an appropriation to fill this out.
During our budget, this is.
See, every, every year on budget, on our appropriations, we have people that walk up and says, I want a hundred thousand dollars. I want two hundred thousand dollars. And they give us no reason why. They give us no benefit, what it's gonna do or nothing. And, and we're trying to hit it a little bit more.
I'm getting back to what we made the resolution of, and I think we need to make the resolution before we can, they can draw one up and bring it back to us to look at and see if we're gonna.
Oh, you gonna put that in the resolution there, Joe?
Well, you can just change yours.
ARPA, could we do that at that meeting next Tuesday?
Yes, let's, let's table this, let's table this to, and discuss this more in that meeting. Is that okay, Commissioner Hardy? You made the motion.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
All right, let's, let's just do that. Okay?
Still make a motion when we adopt that for the budget.
Well, I, I thought I covered that.
Yes, do that.
All right. Can I do?
Yes, ma'am. You can.
Um, under this, I was, uh, going to ask for a resolution to amend the May twenty-eighth resolution for Casey Lane Mills doing business as Osprey Management LLC to Osprey Management LLC doing business as the Osprey.
I move we amend the resolution, May twenty-eighth, for Casey Mem, Casey Lane Mills DBA Osprey Management LLC to Osprey Management LLC DBA the Osprey.
Got a motion, Commissioner Williams, second, Commissioner Bone. Any discussion? All in favor of meaning this resolution?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? So carried.
Also, um, I have come to ask for a resolution to accept the recreational trails grant in the amount of five hundred and fifty-five thousand, seven hundred eighty-three dollars and fourteen cents with our match of one thirty-eight, nine forty-five, seventy-nine, and adopt updated procurement policy for Chilton County, which of course includes the new bid law requirements, also to allow the chairman and administrator to sign all applicable documents.
I'll make the resolution.
Got a motion?
I'll second, and I got a question.
All right, we got a second. Questions? Comments?
We, we discussed several times the hours and days that this park at Manuka's open. If we're gonna spend altogether, what, nearly seven hundred thousand dollars or lower, I think we need to look hard at the days that park's open and the hours.
I think you come back, that last time we looked in on it, it was the original grant that we, when it first come here, they, uh, whoever gives the grant determined the hours that the park was open.
It did.
Yes, sir.
They determined a lot of things that's changed since then.
Well, is this land gonna have the same stipulation, or does anybody know?
I think, uh, whenever it was explained to me, i- if you buy more property or something like that, it still falls upon the rules and regulations of the first grant.
Hey, we need to see if we can get somebody.
I agree a hundred percent.
I would change that, okay. That answered that question. But I think we need to look in to see if we can get Tuberville or one of them to, see if I can get that changed.
I agree a hundred percent.
We got a motion and a second that we accept this grant. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So carried.
Um, a resolution to approve the appropriation funding request packet, which must be completed with requesting county funding.
We approve the appropriation funding request packet.
Second. A motion, Commissioner Williams, second, Commissioner Hardy. Any discussion?
Thank you for doing this.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? So carried.
Um, and a resolution to approve the First Amendment to the property exchange agreement, which was included.
I might get a motion.
Second.
Got a motion, Commissioner Hardy, second. Commissioner Williams, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So carried.
Who we adjourn?
Nope. Uh-uh. We got a little bit more. I asked to adjourn, you don't.
A resolution to... Yes, I, uh, it was under...
Alright, so on Facebook, recommend a motion for the commission to direct all commission employees that are responsible for the commission's social media accounts to take all necessary steps to not allow any comments on the commission's social media.
Would you mind coming up to the mic and repeating that, Ben? Ben, could you say like, remove, monitor, and delete, if necessary, all comments?
Yes, sir.
Would that be appropriate? Because sometimes they, they get past the filter.
Um, alright, so a motion for the commission to direct all commission employees that are responsible for the commission's social media accounts to take all necessary steps to not allow any comments on the commission's social media pages by monitoring, um, and, and deleting any when necessary.
Okay, he's asking for a resolution.
I'll make that resolution.
Second. Go ahead. Got a motion, Commissioner Parnell, second. Commissioner Bone, any more discussion?
Yeah, Ben, do you mind coming back up, giving your reasoning on those court orders for that, please?
Certainly. Uh, you, it, I just gauge, I, I went into pretty good detail in the works.
What if it was one about government page and the First Amendment? You specifically quoted in there. I had a question about it.
Alright. So, um, the, the, um, we're extrapolating from other First Amendment cases that when the government is the speaker, that they may open or keep closed its forum for speech, or even restrict speech based on topic or comment, so long as they're not discriminating based on viewpoint. And the Eleventh Circuit did this in a recent opinion issued last July, and also relied on recent cases from other circuits on social media issues. Um, the Eleventh Circuit case last July was Taylor versus Palmer. Um, and it, it said, um, in some key parts, that on one view, a government page that allows members of the public to post comments is a limited public forum. A government can impose reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions on such a forum, but may not regulate speech based on its substantive content or the message it conveys. In another place in the opinion, it was said, but on another view, a government page is government speech even when others do some of the speaking. When, when a government chooses to speak, when, for example, it conducts a program addressing some issue or commemorating some holiday, the government may say what it wishes and may enlist speakers of its choice. Doing so is not a free speech violation. Just because the government enlists speakers does not mean it must turn over the microphone to all others who wish to speak. And the gist of, of all of that is that the county cannot discriminate based on viewpoint. Uh, but they should have some leeway to, uh, make decisions about content on its own pages, including not to have, have it, uh, as a public forum for, for speech. And so, um, there were a couple different options that were, were presented. Um, one of them was, is the motion that is pending. Another would be to simply do away with your social media presence altogether. Um, but I, but it's not required by the solution that we proposed. Another would be that there would be some level of content, um, regulation that you could, you could monitor. Um, for example, making sure that there weren't threatening comments and, and so forth and so on. But I think you, you run into danger of, um, having to make ad hoc decisions about what content to allow or not allow. So our recommendation is, is either all or, all or nothing, um, in terms of comments.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay, we had a motion, uh, Commissioner Parnell?
Mm-hmm.
Second. Commissioner Bone, any more discussion?
Yeah, I won't say, I don't think you can, you can truly get the feelings of the taxpayers without them having an ability to respond to what we do on our public page, whether it's good or bad. Uh, my page is pretty much political, personal, it's anything. I don't delete comments. And I have two or three that take me to task pretty regular, and that's fine. That's their right, and that's their choice. And I try to take those and see what I can benefit from it. So I think if we don't allow comments, then we're doing the public a disservice and ourselves a disservice by not knowing what they're thinking about what we're doing. That's just my opinion of it. Can I respond?
Yes, sir.
So the, conversely, Alan, the public has the opportunity on their page and all of our personal pages, those of us that have them, to tell us what they think about what we do. When we represent the county at large, we're representing the entity of Chilton County. And when you open it up to a public forum, and there's massive amounts of sometimes justified but often unjustified and ill-informed comments filter out to people that might be interested in moving to Chilton County and living here, or locating their businesses here. And when they see all the things that are said that are wrong and make us look a lot worse than what we really are, we need to limit that. Because we're not trying to sell ourselves to the people that are here. We're trying to sell ourselves to the, the businesses that want to come here and employ our people. And no differently than if you were having a squabble in your house, in your household, you wouldn't want everybody in town to know about it. You don't want everybody in the country to know how dysfunctional we sometimes are. So you kind of need to keep those things as quiet as possible. Well, there was an option on the table that it could be monitored. And one of the cases I referred to at the last meeting was that that is one of the ways some of the municipalities and counties, uh, governments do it. They have somebody who monitors it, and if they're off base, or they're vulgar, or if they're not even in the ballpark with the comment, it gets deleted. That's allowable. But you're going to pay someone to monitor that? And what if somebody posts something at one thirty in the morning? You know, they've been out drinking all night and they decide they weren't around when they're in town. Stays up till eight AM. It's better off to turn it off. Well, uh, you're right, we can, it can be done on our personal pages. And like I said the last time, when you use that on your personal Facebook, then you're not, you have to allow all comments to remain. That's part of that law too, or that ruling.
Go ahead, Ben.
If, if I may, and this is a bit of a rabbit trail, but I, I did, I, I think it's important, um, that the recent cases in March actually looked at the issue of, um, whether a public official's Facebook page activity constituted state action. And if it was state action, whether the public official could block specific comments or users because of the content and speech. And it actually, it actually was a, was a win, under the facts of that case, they had a, a public official who had been very careful not to mix personal and politics. And so the court actually protected the public official's right to have a personal page in that context. Maybe a different situation than what you, you described. When you open it up, it's open. But I, I do, I do want to say, because I, I, I have a bit of, uh, well, pu- public servants, the, the job is hard enough as it is, and so it's, there are some people who, who that is a set, a protected space for.
Ben, would you read the resolution again that was made?
Yes, sir. It was a motion for the commission to direct all commission employees that are responsible for the commission's social media accounts to take all necessary steps to not allow any comments on the commission's social media pages by monitoring and/or deleting when necessary.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of this resolution? Let no, be known with saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Williams opposes. Motion carried.
And sir, I've got one more item, and I think, uh, the engineer had one item left on his as well.
Okay, okay.
Um, a resolution to, uh, participate in that, uh, spotlight in Business Alabama. Did you need to think about that, or did you?
I think we should table that until I...
I think we should table it.
Table it for the next week?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we'll table that and, uh...
And did we get a copy of that?
He's left some back.
Okay.
Um, and then the engineer...
I get a copy in mail.
That was added to the agenda.
I never saw it.
I've got one since I've been a commissioner.
We all have had them in our packets since we, the, the months that we were spotlighted, we were provided cards.
Mm-hmm. Okay, what was your next, Ms. Sylvia?
The engineer had one item left on his that was added.
I'm sorry?
That was added about the bridge on County Road two fifty-one.
Hmm, that's right. Yes, sir.
I would like to request the commission's approval, uh, for the county to enter into agreement with Alabama Bridge Builders to replace a timber deck for a, uh, bridge on County Road two fifty-one at either no cost or a cost of one dollar, with the county supplying the materials, uh, pending the county attorney's, uh, review and approval.
I'll make that motion.
Got a motion? Commissioner Parnell, second. Commissioner Hardy, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Is that all? Need a motion that we adjourn?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, we adjourn. Thank y'all.